Good evening and welcome. The September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Measuring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Dr. James, would you read the board commitment statement, please?
Yes, we are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received to the board clerk no later than five forty, which I think we're later, let's say. Five fifty-five, we had a late start. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Ms. Martinez Young, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dr. Allison Campbell, District One. Mrs. Lori Conrad, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three. Mrs. Nancy Throer, District Four.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District Five.
Here.
Shereya Hussain Danirom, Donnellan High School.
Here.
Ariana Reyes, Bellevue High School.
Here.
Dr. Danielle Brewer, Interim Superintendent.
Here.
Mrs. Susan Green, Attorney.
Dr. Brewer, who will lead us in our inspiration and pledge this evening?
Thank you. And as you can see, we have an audience filled tonight, so this is going to be an exciting time. We, I'd like to invite Mrs. Deborah Riedel to the podium. She will introduce our guests for the inspiration. And then we have three really nice recognitions for you this evening, Board. But, good evening, Ms. Riedel.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good evening, Board Chair Conrad and school board members. Joining me at the podium this evening is Mr. Rodrick Gordon. Rodrick was one of twenty-one Marion County teachers who participated in the Marion County Public Schools Advanced Scholarship Program, earning a master's degree from the University of Central Florida. During tonight's recognition, a little bit later, you will hear more about that opportunity and meet the graduates of our very first cohort. But first, I would like to tell you a little bit more about Mr. Gordon. Rodrick Gordon Senior has been a dedicated math teacher with Marion County Public Schools for over twenty years, serving at Vanguard High School. For the past three years, he has taught IB Math, helping students engage in rigorous learning and preparing them for success in higher education. He is a proud father of two children, Rodrick J. Gordon Junior and Ramaya G. Gordon. Beyond the classroom, Mr. Gordon has devoted more than a decade as an adjunct professor at the College of Central Florida, where he also tutors in the College Reach-Out Program, supporting students for over five years. He has also provided tutoring at both CF and the University of Central Florida for over two years. Mr. Gordon enjoys traveling and spending quality time with family and friends. He also serves as a youth leader and musician at Wachula Missionary Baptist Church under the direction of Reverend Willis Kinerd Pastor. With a passion for teaching, mentoring, music, and service, Mr. Gordon finds joy in helping students build confidence, develop critical thinking skills, and prepare for future, future success in college and beyond. So now I would like to give Mr. Gordon an opportunity to say a few words about his experience at UCF.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair, Superintendent, School Board Members, colleagues, and community partners. It is truly an honor to stand before you this evening to share what the UCF Advanced Program, adding distinctive value and notable college experience, has meant to me personally, and more importantly, what it means for our students here in Marion County. This opportunity has added tremendous value to my professional growth and has been, has given deep, has given me a deep capacity to serve, teach, and inspire. Through advanced studies at the University of Central Florida, I've engaged with innovative teaching strategies, cutting-edge research, research, and peer-reviewed practices that have transformed the way I approach the classroom. It's helped me to grow, not only as a teacher, but also as a leader, equipped me to mentor, share knowledge, and contribute more broadly to our educational community. Because of UCF Advanced, I've been able to apply effective, peer-reviewed, innovative instructional strategies in my teaching. My students are no longer just memorizing and calculating, they are engaged in meaningful, real-world learning. They are developing critical thinking, problem-solving, and resilience, skills that will serve them in college, career, and life. And when teachers grow, students grow. This program has made me a stronger teacher and a more confident leader, both in the classroom and beyond. I want to express my gratitude to this board, the superintendent, UCF, and all who have championed this vision. You have invested not just in teachers, but in generations of students whose futures will be brighter because of programs like this. In closing, education is the great equalizer, but only if we are willing to invest in it. The UCF Advanced Program is proof of the power that, of the power of that investment. When teachers rise, students rise, and together, our community rises. Once again, thank you for believing in us, supporting us, and helping us advance one teacher, one student, one future at a time. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite everyone to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is he going to stick around so we can get a picture at the end?
Yes, he's part of the first recognition.
Perfect.
Ready? Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And so with that, our first recognition is, again, Mrs. Riedel will introduce the Advanced Scholarship recipients.
Yes, I'm very excited about this. I have the distinct honor of recognizing this inspiring group of individuals, and they're sitting right back there tonight. They'll be coming up here in just a minute. This is our very first cohort of Advanced Scholarship recipients who proudly walked across the stage at the University of Central Florida on August second with a college degree in hand. I think Mr. Whitehouse was there with them as well. ADVANCE stands for Adding Distinctive Value and Notable College Experience. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, we launched the ADVANCE Scholarship with the goal of empowering our employees to further their education and in turn enrich the lives of the students that they serve. I'm proud to share that this inaugural group has exceeded all expectations. Through this opportunity, fourteen of our very own teachers earned their master's degree in secondary math, and seven earned their master's degree in secondary science. These twenty-one individuals balanced work, study, and life with incredible determination. Their success is a testament to their resilience, passion, and commitment to education, not just for themselves, but for the students and the community that they serve. They use this experience as a way to learn, grow, and achieve something remarkable that will have a lasting impact. We also wanted to extend our heartfelt thanks to the team at the University of Central Florida. Their partnership and support were instrumental in making, instrumental in making this first-time initiative a success. To our graduates, we are so proud of you. You are trailblazers, and your journey will inspire others in the future. Congratulations to all of you. At this time, I would like to recognize each of the graduates. Please move to the front of the stage as your name is called. We have several of them here this evening. Wanda Bowers. Wandas from North Marion High School. Churchill Campbell from Bellevue Middle School. Luketha Damon from College Park Elementary. Asha Denton from Maplewood Elementary. Jennifer Philman from North Marion High School. Rodrick Gordon from Vanguard High School. Caitlin Howell from Horizon Academy. Abby Monkata from Ross Prairie Elementary. Brianna Brucuglio from North Marion High School. Kennedy Payne, Marion Oaks Elementary. Judith Rickett, North Marion High School. Robert Schmidt, Bellevue High School. Melissa Williams, Bellevue Middle School. Letitia Williams, Fort King Middle. These are your, we'll call the science people next, but these are your math people, they did the math track at UCF. Congratulations, you can stay right there. And these are the students who completed the science track. Diana Phi from Westport High School. Eleanor Gilliam, Westport High School. Crystal Velez, Anthony Elementary School. Melissa Huffman, Winding Oaks Elementary School. Brenda Keen, College Park Elementary. Madeline Vandaventer, North Marion Middle School. And Veronica Velez, Donnellan Elementary School. Congratulations to all of you.
Gradu- graduates, I just want to say, incredible that you're going back to school, working, taking care of your families, and all of those things. The idea of going back to school right now is just mind-boggling for me. So I just want to tell you, thank you so much for your commitment, not only to our students, but to our community. So thank you so very much. And if you don't mind, if you'll hold on just a second, we'd like to come down and grab a quick picture with you in to celebrate. And the principals, too. What'd they say? They're probably like, oh, they thought they were going to get away with not coming down.
As I'm, as we're going to do the next recognition, I want to comment that Mrs. Riedel worked really hard to begin the process of this program. So I want to tell her, she might, I don't see where she went, but I want to say thank you to her. And also, Dr. Varner led our Federal Programs Department, which really was a big portion of getting everything in place to make this work. So it was a collaborative effort, and we're thankful for it. Okay, at this time, we will have another exciting recognition, and this is for our Most Improved Attendance Award. So Ms. Yvette Delnoddell will come to the podium and share these great recognitions.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good evening, Board Chair Conrad and board members. As you know, as a district, we are very excited to share these three special attendance recognitions because we are committed to improving our chronic absenteeism rates across the district. Chronic absenteeism, for folks that are watching, is defined by missing ten percent of school days. And while sometimes that doesn't seem like a lot of days, the important thing to remember is just missing a few days is important to a student's academic career. It means that they're missing crucial instructional time. They're also missing services that are on campus, and they're missing experiences that can help shape their future. And so we want to make sure that students are here every day and ready to learn. Ms. Sheri Loria, our attendance advocate in school and truancy, I can't even do the whole title. Our attendance advocate and truancy liaison, court liaison, is here to share three schools who have improved their chronic absenteeism rates. For last year, they had the most improvement from all of our schools, and we would like to recognize them this evening.
Didn't you make it?
I did.
I want to begin by thanking BJ Trophies for their continued partnership with Marion County Public Schools. And on these beautiful plaques you see this evening, that the schools, they'll keep up on their walls forever, were donated by BJ's trophies, and we appreciate that. And I want to begin by recognizing our elementary school. And all these words tonight, they were written by the principals, so all these shout-outs are from them. This elementary school reduced their chronic absences by focusing on personal contact and building relationships. This principal is so proud of her entire team and wanted to recognize their attendance specialist Jasmine James and school counselor Amanda Orbin, that worked strong and collaborated with parents to reduce the barriers they may have to getting their child to school on time and every day. In addition, the chronic absence students were assigned a check-in and check-out for their attendance. They can earn a sticker each day they attended consecutively and earn incentives for each milestone they achieved in attendance. And it looked like it worked. Let's welcome Shady Hill Elementary's principal, Ms. Anna Streeter McAllister, and her attendance team to accept their award for such a magnificent achievement.
Come on down. Price is Right when they come from the back. Up front. I said it feels like The Price is Right, you guys coming all the way down from the back, but then I'm, I'm dating myself when I say that.
Okay, we're going to move on to our middle school. While we have our winners stay up here, we're going to get a picture. This school's efforts last year incorporated everyone at the school. The teachers dedicated themselves to building a welcoming environment. Teachers worked hard to be relational while talking to students about their progress. Their attendance clerk, Kirsten Cabralis, attendance specialist Pam Pickens, homeschool liaison, Ephiel Gloria Robinson, and school counselors TC Sap and Heather Howard worked tirelessly to contact parents, make home visits, find resources, and do whatever it takes to make it possible for the students to come to school. The staff and teachers were and are relentless when it comes to their student success in school. Let's welcome Howard Middle School's principal, Ms. Suzette Parker, and her attendance team to accept their award for doing such a fantastic job.
When they say it takes a village, it takes a village.
She's coming.
This high school reduced their chronic absences by being intentional about building rapport and relationships with both students and families so that everyone felt supported and connected to the school community. They created the Ketchup Cafe, where parents can sit down with an administrator or counselor to review their child's progress and better understand attendance expectations and graduation requirements. Their team monitored attendance daily through spreadsheets by grade level so they could quickly identify students at risk and intervene before the problem grew. Counselors, teachers, and administrators worked together to mentor and support students while also making sure families were involved through regular communication. They also created student incentive systems to recognize and celebrate improvement. Let's welcome North Marion High School principal James Johnson and his attendance team to accept the award for a job well done.
Love that they were wearing the same shirts.
It's so nice. Did you get yours yet, Dr. Brewer?
Yes, Friday night.
Okay, thank you. I just briefly want to say, really, thank you is not enough. I see so many familiar faces in front of me, and attendance is a high priority for this board. It's a legislative priority for us also, and, but we know that you are the boots on the ground. You're doing the work every, every single day. So I just want to say how much we appreciate your hard work and effort in helping get our students to school. And we know that it's built on relationships and the time that you take to get to know and meet with your students and help them be excited to get to school. So we just appreciate you so much. And if you hold one second, we want to come down and celebrate with you.
All right, Chair Conrad, before we introduce the next, the last recognition, I want to introduce our two student board representatives and share a few things about both of those.
Fantastic.
So we have Ariana Reyes is Bellevue High School senior. She is a Cambridge diploma candidate and is an integral member of the ACE Ambassador Team at Bellevue High School. She is also an active member of the National Honor Society, the Student Government, and the Health Occupation Students of America Club. So we're excited to have her. I also would like to introduce Shereya Hussain Danirom is a senior at Donnellan High School. She is a part of the marching and concert bands, serving as an exemplary leader with the title of drum major. She is also part of the dual enrollment program and will, and will graduate with both her AA degree and her high school diploma at the same time. She is also part of the National Honor Society, the Student Government, the Cambridge ACE Program, and the Varsity Volley, Volleyball Team. So both great leaders on their campuses, and we're excited to have them join us tonight. So at this time, we would like to, I would like to introduce Mr. Corey Taylor, and he will provide our final recognition of the evening.
Good evening. Board Chair Conrad, members of the board, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Brewer, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight. In January two thousand and twenty-four, Florida law introduced a new standard for school safety, the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Model. This model provided a systematic, fact-based process to identify threatening or concerning behaviors, assess potential risks, and put interventions and supports in place to protect students while helping them thrive. Marion County Public Schools is fully aligned with these requirements. Today, every MCPS campus has a trained school-based threat management team, a team of dedicated administrative, instructional, mental health, and law enforcement professionals who stand on the front lines of prevention and protection. Their work is both critical and too often unseen. They operate quietly in the background, gathering facts, weighing circumstances, collaborating across disciplines, and making thoughtful, sometimes difficult decisions, all in service of keeping our schools safe, supportive, and ready for learning. This mission is not glamorous, and it is certainly not easy. They take on this vital work in addition to their regular responsibilities, demonstrating a level of dedication and professionalism that too often goes unrecognized. Yet their actions can prevent harm. Their actions can redirect a young person's path and ultimately strengthen the safety net around our entire community. I'm reminded of a remark once made by Circuit Court Judge Willard Pope, who said, "The world is quick to point out when we err, but very seldom is quick to point out when a positive impression is made." Those words struck a chord with me. Since then, I've made it my personal mission to be the kind of person who takes time to recognize others not only for what they do, but for how well they do it. And tonight, we pause to do exactly that. Through the newly-launched Threat Management Recognition Program, we spotlight the exceptional contributions of our team members, from meticulous documentation and adherence to the Florida model to extraordinary collaboration, innovation, timeliness, and leadership. Each award tells a story of someone going above and beyond, embodying the best of what threat management should be. You may notice that our award presenters this evening are students from our very own MCPS campuses. That is not by accident. It is a powerful reminder that- that everything that our threat management teams do, every meeting, every decision, every act of care ultimately touches the lives of our children first. It is only fitting that our students play a role in honoring those who work tirelessly to keep them safe. I encourage you to remember that this work may not make headlines, but it does change lives. It safeguards classrooms, and it absolutely deserves to be celebrated. It's my privilege to present seven awards, each described in your program guide, that honor outstanding contributions of the honorees this evening. The Anchor Award is presented to Susan Williams. The Architect Award is presented to Billy Faro. The Maestro Award is presented to Lindsay Copeland, Margaret Fortner, Julie Martin, Misty Gwynn, Jason McNulty, Ivan Santana Crespo, and Sarah Schrader. The Stewart Award is presented to Courtney Hauck. The Torchbearer Award is presented to Principals Sarah Dobbs and Ginger Cruz. The Sherlock Award is presented to Cynthia Jones and Lindsay Copeland. Finally, we recognize dedicated stakeholders whose efforts strengthen our mission of safer schools through their action, advocacy, and support. For their help launching this recognition program, the First Champion Award is presented to Marion County Public Education Foundation Executive Board Members Megan Magamol, John David Severlera, Karen Hatch, Jennifer Hatchett, Michael Mills, and Chris Yancey. And for their steadfast encouragement and inspiring a collective commitment to safety, the Second Champion Award is presented to Marion County School Board Members, Chair Lori Conrad, Vice Chair Reverend Eric Cummins, Dr. Allison Campbell, Dr. Sarah James, Nancy Throer, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Danielle Brewer. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, I, I cannot say it any better than you have already said it. You just said it so beautifully. We appreciate, again, so many familiar faces, a large task that takes a lot of time to keep our students and our school community safe. So we're just really grateful for the work that you do every single day to keep our students safe. So we just appreciate you so much, and we want to come down and celebrate with you. Everybody's leaving us.
I know.
All the good, all the good stuff. Yes. Okay, we still have a few more things to celebrate. We're going to move on to recognizing donations. We have $1,100 in tangible items, backpacks, school supplies, and lunchboxes to Dr. NH Jones Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council to be used for student needs. Thank you to the Marion County Veterans Council. We appreciate you. $1,500 to Bellevue Middle School from the VFW Bellevue Memorial Post 8083 to support Bellevue Middle School's Robotics Club. Thank you, VFW Memorial Post. $1,000 to North Marion High School from the Marion County Children's Alliance to support North Marion High School's Students Against Drunk Driving Program. Thank you to the Children's Alliance for that generous donation. $2,000 to Donellen Elementary School from the Women's Club of Donellen to cover the costs of the 2025-2026 student planners, with any remaining funds to be used for the supplies for students and staff. Thank you to the Women's Club of Donellen. $12,730.36 in tangible items, three glass whiteboards, two Apple iPads, two iPad pencils with cases, eight Dell computer monitors, two wagon carts, one Dell Precision Computer, three Dell laptops, one conference camera, two Dell keyboards, to the Safe Schools Department from the Marion County Sheriff's Department. Thank you so much to the Sheriff's Department. We sure do appreciate their partnership. Dr. Brewer, I'll turn it back over to you for approval of the agenda.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 9th, 2025 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-25.1, D-25.2, D-25.3, and D-25.4. These items have been placed under Discussion/Regular Agenda Items and Item C-19.1 that has been completely withdrawn from this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Ms. Throer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Ms. Martinez, would you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting?
The notice for the September 9th, 2025 School Board Meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on August 29th, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 29th, 2025 Special School Board Agenda to receive the tentative budget? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Four zero, all right. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 7th, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Throer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero. That was closer, Reverend Cummings. We're getting closer. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 12th, 2025 Board of Directors Leasing Corporation Meeting? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero. All right, good evening again, Attorney Green. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
Thank you, good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of the Florida statutes, the, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either with regard to one of today's agenda items or a matter that relates to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:55 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak to the board, if, who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than, other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to administrative staff following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name or identifying references of other students and/or their families are strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Martinez Young, do we have any speakers this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
We got them all, got them out of the way early this time. The first meeting. Okay, may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C-10.1 through C-22.5, with the exception of items D-25.1, D-25.2, D-25.3, and D-25.4 that have been placed under Discussion/Regular Agenda Items and Item C-19.1, which has been completely withdrawn from the agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through August 4th, 2025. Ms. Martinez Young, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD26-003E with off-campus virtual learning for the first and second quarters of the 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Moving on to Discussion/Regular Agenda Items, may I have a motion to approve the agreement with CMS Imaging Incorporated? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Brewer, you have some information regarding this item.
Yes, ma'am, and we have direct, our Director of Marion Technical College. He has a new title. We changed the name of that this year. He has come into the podium to provide brief remarks on the agreement with CMS Imaging Incorporated.
Good evening, Mr. Smallridge.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Brewer, Board Chair Conrad, board members. A few months back, I think you guys might remember, I came and talked to you a little bit about our radiologic technology program moving forward to offer an associate of science degree in radiography. Well, this CMS purchase is part of that plan. We're gonna, we're gonna add a live radiology lab at MTC. And the largest part of this project is the actual purchasing of the three pieces of equipment, two permanently mounted x-ray tech, or machines, I guess is the best way to describe them, and then a portable one that the students can learn on. And when we were looking at doing this project, we, we talked about the hospitals that our students go to for clinicals use two particular brands or types of x-ray machines, imaging machines. So we're looking at purchasing the best that is out there and what our students are going to get hired into and, and need to be familiar with. So we would have the most up-to-date lab in, in Marion County, especially against our competitors. And we would offer our students, instead of just clinical time on real machines, they would use real machines to use what I call medical mannequins. There's probably a better name for that. I think they're called phantoms. They can actually take real images and practice seeing if they're taking the proper type of images because if they don't do it properly, they can see it immediately. And so not only will they have their clinical experiences, they'll have the hands-on experiences at the, at the college. So what I learned from going through my other building projects was that if we separate out the, the actual equipment, buy it separately from giving it to the builder, not only do we save the tax money from owner-direct purchasing, we can also save the 8% that we would pay the builder to handle that, which is not necessary. And we also can reduce the amount of contingency money that we need. So this purchase being done separately is a little different, but the build-out part of it's roughly $300,000. This is just under $600,000 for the equipment, and we have the money from fund balance from being frugal and saving our money. So the money's there, and we just need the permission to move forward with the purchase, and we're going to save a lot of money and have a really good lab.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Smallridge. Board, do you have any comments? Yes, Dr. James?
Just something brief. I think Mr. Smallridge and I talked about this probably, it's been almost a year ago now.
Been working on it.
Yes, and diligently working on it and seeing a vision to impact. And so looking at the big picture and truly how we're going to get to a place where our students have access to quality education, secondary, post-secondary education right here in the Marion County Public School community. And, you know, I welcome competition. I think it's wonderful. And so, you know, yes, there are other programs similar to this within the Marion County community. And we're going to offer a program, and other schools will offer a program as well. And I think students will have opportunity for choice, which is something we love in the state of Florida. And I'm confident that the program we offer at MTC is going to be exceptional, and it's going to meet our students exactly where they are. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. It's actually already in place. We're, we're just going to offer a twist to it. Instead of just being a certificate program, there'll be a second track to go for the AS degree. We're right in the middle of that. And even if for some strange reason we didn't get that totally approved, we still need the live lab because we're already very successful. We're the only tech college in Florida that has this program. We're grandfathered in. So this is part of keeping it with our accreditation, is that they really wanted us to have a live lab, so we finally had the money in the bank to do it.
And also, just to elaborate, that potential for the AS program also expands an opportunity for more students to be able to participate in the program.
Absolutely, because then our high school students can go into dual enrollment. They can take the prereqs in high school, go right into the program, and graduate two years later with their AS in, in radiography.
Absolutely, and so I just think the ability to expand what we offer within our own, our own educational community right here in Marion County Public Schools is exceptional. So I'm looking forward to the continued growth.
I am too, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. James. Anything else further? Okay, we're excited. Thank you for that information. Board, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Smallridge. May I have a motion to approve the District Managed Turnaround Plan, Step 1, for Oakcrest Elementary School for the 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Brewer, you have some information on this item you'd like to share.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Lamar Rembert. He's the Area Superintendent for Region 1. He supervises Oakcrest Elementary, and he's going to provide brief remarks this evening about the district turnaround plan. And, and he'll be available for questions if you have any. Thank you, Mr. Rembert.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Good evening, Board Chair Conrad and school board members. The top is our District Managed Turnaround Option Plan for Oakcrest Elementary. This plan that is presented for your approval was constructed after a comprehensive review of historical school performance data to address the school's consecutive D grades. Data was disaggregated by subject, grade level, and subgroup performance Data was disaggregated by subject, grade level, and subgroup performance with additional metrics to analyze attendance and discipline trends over the past three years. In response to the analysis, an action plan was created, and the highlights are appointing Sarah Dobbs, a proven school leader with a track record of successful turnaround experience, staffing the school with certified, experienced, and effective instructors, including sixteen reading-endorsed teachers, ongoing progress monitoring through local and state assessments, weekly data review with the central office team to create plans of action to address the data, support from the Bureau of School Improvement at least twice a month, coaching, supporting, and monitoring teachers in delivering standard-based instruction to all students through highly effective instructional practices in all grades and content areas every day, improving classroom and school environment to decrease the number of discipline referrals, improving classroom and school environment through PBIS and attendance initiatives to reduce the number of chronically absent students. There's already signs of early successes. Oakcrest is hovering around ninety-five percent daily average attendance, so we're very proud of that. Holding monthly meetings for the attendance response committee composed of business partners, community outreach, district, and school-based members to target strategies for increased engagement and attendance. Once approved, Dr. Brewer will present this targeted improvement plan to the State Board of Education on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Rember. Board, I open it up for any questions? Yes.
I'll just make a comment. Thank you, Mr. Rember, and thank you, Dr. Brewer, for just bringing the team to the community meeting the other night. I will say it wasn't much of a community meeting, there was only a couple of parents there, but you can look at that two ways, and the way I choose to look at it is that Principal Dobbs is known as being a wonderful, not only AP, when, Assistant Principal when she was at Oakcrest, but also her great work out at East Marion. If the community was not comfortable with what, with how school opened at Oakcrest this year, I can guarantee you they would have been there. And they were not. And to me, that was just a statement that they are comfortable where their children are going. You already mentioned that the attendance is exceeding their goal. It's ninety-two percent, almost every day, it's ninety-five, ninety-six percent. They are hitting on all cylinders, and it just continues to be my hope and prayer moving forward that with, with high-need schools that we know that we have, we have to figure out a way to maintain the level of, of support. We've seen what happens when the support is withdrawn. There's, it, it just doesn't work when you have such a multitude of needs at, at some of our schools. So that'll be a task, you know, for, for all of us moving forward, how we can allocate to make sure these schools continue to rise. But I'm just so excited to, for this school year, and it's already a lot of fun, which I'll comment on later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, Mr. Rember, I just wanna add, if you would please share my gratitude for the work and the time that's gone into getting this Oakcrest off to a great start this year, and just really appreciate it. You know, teaching is a hard job every day, but they have some extra challenges that they're facing, and just really excited about the information and the data that's coming forward already, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
All right, if there's no other comments, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant Award? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thorwar. Second by Dr. James. Dr. Brewer, you have some information for us regarding this item.
Yes, ma'am, I do, and we had, there was an error in the lobby waiting room area for our public request form to speak, and so I, I would like to ask, after we do this next discussion item, if we can have one of the forms submitted, given to Ms. Martinez Young, so that per, that public, that community member can speak to the board. But at this time, we'll continue with our discussion items, and that I would like to ask Ms. Ramona Belcher, she's our supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services, to come to the podium to provide brief remarks on the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant Program.
Good evening, Madam Chair Conrad, board members, and Dr. Brewer. Tonight, I am requesting permission to accept the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant for the amount of eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars awarded by the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. This wonderful grant brings funding to the elementary schools aimed at introducing our young learners to a colorful variety of exotic fresh fruits and vegetables. With this program, elementary students have the opportunity to taste different fruits and veggies twice a week, making healthy eating fun and engaging. Plus, teachers will be equipped with fun educational materials that showcase interesting facts and nutritional information about each of the items, creating a great opportunity for learning together. We do love seeing the curiosity of the students as they try new flavors. Thank you for your support of this important initiative. I believe the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program will enhance our students' nutrition education and foster healthy eating habits. I'll open it up if you have any questions.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate the information. Board, any questions or comments?
Just one quick question.
Oh, sure.
What could we do in the future to try to incentivize other schools to participate beyond the ones that are listed here?
Well, I know there was a lot of movement this year for the, so with principals moving, we are going to be putting more information out. Maybe with new principals on board, they may not be aware of what the program is, so through our connections, we will put information out there. We also send in weekly highlights, so we're gonna do a little more highlighting on our Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, so we can encourage participation. We are doing really good. We are servicing over eleven thousand students, which is a little bit over fifty percent of our elementary students are being exposed to this program.
Yes, I mean, I, selfishly, I see my own children's school is not listed here, so I would love for opportunities for it to be expanded to as many possible elementary schools as possible, because I, I mean, getting them an opportunity to experience foods that they may not be able to experience at home is, is always so important.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Dr. James. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no more comments, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, we'll pause here for our public speaker.
Thank you, Chair.
Jamie Niswenger?
Hello, my name is Jamie Niswenger. Last name is N.I.S.W.O.N.G.E.R. So I'm coming in to speak. Yesterday, nine-eight, my student was intentionally hit in the face by another classmate. This would be the VPK program. It should still follow the same standards as Marion County Public Schools. I did try to address the situation with the school. I've been kinda black-walled. I came in after a car line, the principal was in a meeting. I called, the principal said, "Well, some parents don't train their kids, and it's our job to train them." Well, my student should not be a training tool. How many kids do you hit before you learn not to hit? How many people's kids do you allow to get hit? The student was not only not disciplined, but he was, he remained in the classroom. He was never removed. So you taught this, this VPK class, they learned by watching. You taught a VPK class of kids, it's okay to hit, because my kid was hit, they learned, "Oh, you stay in the classroom, you're not removed, you're not pulled out." There was no, no repercussions for that student's actions. I requested a no-contact order, I've been black-walled. My kid went to school today. How did I know he was safe? How did I know that kid was not in the classroom next to him? I don't know where that kid sits versus where my child sits. I'm not there all day. I expect you, as a school board, to keep my child safe. I expect that school's principal, her children in that school, to be her number-one priority. I understand you have meetings, but when you have situations arise, those need to be addressed. I've been talked to by other school officials who tell me, "The principal's working on it." Well, based on my conversation with her yesterday, she's not working on it. She doesn't care. It's just a process of learning. And, well, maybe that child learned, and maybe they didn't. Maybe it'll hit somebody next week. Will he have the same consequences? Will he just stay in that classroom and continue to hit kids? I mean, it's very scary when we talk about discipline. I've heard many meetings up here, and your policies look great. You know, this is our policy. We're making everything uniform, uniform, uniform. It's not uniform. It's based on what any individual perceives at a school. Everything is different from one school to the next. There's no set in stone. Kids are treated differently. Everybody's treated differently, and we need to change that. By policy, everybody's treated the same. Your policies look great on the books, they read great. They're not implemented the way they're written. There needs to be something to make sure that every policy that's written is being implemented the same across your district. And that no kid, I mean, if a kid's hit or physically assaulted in a school, they should not be placed back in the same class with that student, at least immediately after. How do you think a kid feels? These are young children. I mean, I don't know where a kid would learn that. I mean, it's not like we're running on the playground and we whack the child, you know? That's an accident. Accidents happen. Accidents we grow from, we live and we learn, we can't, you know, that's just, that's kids being kids. But to go up, to snatch something out of somebody's hand, and to close your fist and punch a child in the face, that's not an accident. That is a deliberate act of violence. Doesn't matter if you're four years old, five years old, ten, fifteen, or seventeen. If you do a deliberate act of violence, it needs to be punished the same. And your principals need to care. Your principals, this should be their top priority. Every student in their school should be a top priority. And I don't feel that my student is. You probably took, that student probably stayed in that classroom because the mama had to work. Well, you know, I don't care about the mama's work schedule. I also had to work. But had I been told that that student was staying in that classroom, I personally would leave work and go get my kid. My kid could have went home, so that could, kid could have stayed in school. But as the parent, I was not made aware that you were leaving that child in the classroom. I'm not asking to know what their individual discipline is, but as a parent, I do feel I had the right to be informed that you were leaving that student in the classroom. And you guys are lacking on your communication. Communication is a big issue. And as the other commenter said before, discipline in this district really struggles, because we let these kids get away at four, and we're gonna let this kid get away at five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and wow, now they're in middle school and they're completely out of control. And then we're gonna try to discipline them, it doesn't work that way. Four years old, if you do something, you're disciplined. Five years old, six years old, maybe they'll learn, maybe they'll stop, maybe they won't, but we need to do something, and it needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, board, after board comments, we're gonna move on to item D. twenty-five point four. May I have a motion to approve the Request for Proposal forty-one forty R.C. and resulting agreement for Superintendent Search Services? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thorwar.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Board, since Attorney Powers is not here today, I'll just share briefly a little bit of information, and that is after, if this is approved this evening, he and I will get together and email out a timeline, because I know it was a concern of the board, because we're two board members that were not able to be a part of that conversation. So that is our next step, and when Attorney Powers re-returned, we'll be sending out more information to you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you so much, board. We're now gonna move on to meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for September eighteenth at nine A.M. There will be a special school board meeting on September twenty-third at seven A.M. The next school board meeting is scheduled for September twenty-third at five thirty P.M., and there will be a school capital outlay certex oversight committee meeting on September twenty-fourth at four P.M. here at MTI. Board, now we're going to move into board comments. Ms. Martinez Young?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have two. Board members, I have your packets ready for the November third for your legislative day. It'll be on the board packet on October fourteenth. If you are gonna cancel, I need to know by October thirty-first in order to get the refund on that. And then the FSBA is out for the winter conference, December second through the fifth. Those of you that do wanna attend, please let me know, as open registration will be September seventeenth at two P.M. And as we know, that fills up quickly, and, and you're moved over to the Overflow Hotel. So just let me know by the sixteenth, and that way I can try to be one of the first ones to get you reserved in the hotel at the Hyatt.
Chair, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
When will we know when we, if we have meetings on the Monday for Legislative, we can Tallahassee?
I don't know, I, I haven't heard anything from Dr. Campbell.
I haven't heard none of the agenda.
Okay, I just, maybe we could bring that up in the next work session, or we could just touch base on that to try to firm that up. I don't intend to stay the night in Tallahassee and just drive up for the day on Tuesday, but if we're gonna have a day full of meetings on Monday, then certainly I'd wanna be able to be present.
And if I remember the conversation, some of the conversation, the hope was to have some on that after, first afternoon, and then a full day the next, but I didn't hear if that's happened or not. So I'll work on getting more information for you on that. Anything else, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Madam.
All right, thank you for organizing that. Attorney Green?
No comments, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Brewer.
Yes, of course, I have a few things. Today, we had our first administrative, well, we had our elementary principal meeting, and so we were able to share a couple of highlights, so I wanted to also bring the board into the loop of what I, what we shared. Dr. Curley was able to share what he presented last week during his work session, and he shared that eighty-six percent of our students in Marion County never received one referral last year for student discipline. So when we, when we think about the work that the Code of Student Conduct does, and our administrators for enforcing that work and setting expectations, we're really pleased with that number, so eighty-six percent, and that was for last school year. So we're really, and we're looking forward to even improving that even more this school year. Today was day twenty-one for the majority of our schools, other than Ona Colan and of course Wyomina Park. We had forty-six thousand students, forty-six zero nine six enrolled. And so we're, I wanna just share this with you, our high schools are a hundred-and-eighty-nine over projection, so we're not losing students in high school, they are coming, and we're really proud of what we're able to offer the students because of the hard work that our career and technical education courses offer, plus our, as I've stated before, our advanced curriculum. Our middle school students are twenty, we have twenty-one students below the projection. Elementary, we have a hundred-and-forty-nine below the projection, but overall, we're still over by nineteen students, and that is unlike any other district in the state of Florida. So we continue to welcome students, and we knew this week we would receive more because it's after Labor Day, so we welcome them, and we're excited that they choose Marion County Public Schools. I also shared with the, the principals today that I've visited all the schools, as you know, and, and now we're on round two, so we're really looking at the evidence that we're seeing through, from our high-quality instruction, utilizing our early warning indicators for grouping and the attendance. So we already shared so many good things about attendance today, but I saw something that I thought was a really neat phrase, and it was attendance matters more than ever, we know that, but it's more than grades. It's missed when they're not in school, it's missed friendships, and it's missed opportunities. So I think when we think of attendance, sometimes we think, "You have to get there, you have to get there for grades," but it's more than that. It's that social experience and missed friendship. So I, I wanna share that because it's great to sell, all of the celebrating with attendance is just exciting. On a, on another note, as we all know, we had an incident yesterday that impacted one of our elementary schools, and I, I wanna recognize and thank the students that saw something and said something. And that's, that's important, and that has to be our focus at all times, is recognizing the students that do the right thing, and because of their efforts, our students on that school bus were safe. And so we, we can't say that enough, and we continue to encourage, you say, if you see something, say something. And also to highlight and just praise that bus driver. The bus driver, and we will have other recognitions for that bus driver, but that bus driver followed all of the protocols and did what was necessary to get, to get law enforcement involved quickly. They were there this morning when we met with law enforcement, they were there within seconds. And so when we think of that tremendous work, that's why our students were safe today, or yesterday. So, and we thank the College Park Elementary School-based team for making personal phone calls to all of the families that were on the bus to make sure they were all notified directly from the College Park staff, and then, of course, our automated Skype. And then, of course, our automated Sky Alert messaging went out to this College Park community, school community at nine-thirty yesterday morning. So we appreciate everyone that did the right thing yesterday and made the right choices. So that's all my comments this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. We're going to give our student representatives an opportunity to share if they would like. Sharia, is that right? Say it, say it.
Sharia.
Sharia. Okay, Sharia, we'd like to hear from you.
Hello? Oh, my God, wait, this is so weird. Okay, so the first comment I had was like from the beginning of the meeting.
Talking to you.
Oh, into the mic, okay. He's not here anymore, but I did have a couple of questions for him. So my first question was, how does university differ from high school, and how will your knowledge impact the students? Obviously, I can't get that answer, but.
You can email him. I'll give you his email.
Okay. And then my second question was, how is balancing education, obviously like a higher-level education and adult life, because I know that's a lot more different than being a teenager and being in high school? For Dinellin with the absences, I know I've heard a lot of our office members talk, like front office members talk about how we implemented this new system of three tardies each semester. Like if you're, once that their tardy hits, like you get a referral, I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure, I'm never late, so.
We're glad to hear that.
But I know from a lot of people in our school, and I've seen personally, our school is really full, like really, really full. But I know that new high school is being built, but I think the tardy system is really helping. It's nice to see a bunch of people in my last year, even though I only have three classes, it's nice to see a bunch of people that I'll miss.
Right. Thank you so much. We're grateful that you shared those things specifically from your school and, and you know, what you're seeing there, because a lot of times we talk about attendance, but we don't get to talk so much about tardies because we're just trying to get kids to school. So thank you for sharing that, it's so important. Okay, and next, Ariana?
Um, sorry. I would like to take this moment, I think they're all left, but to again say thank you to the Threat Safety Team members. I can speak from, as a member of Bellevue High School, like our team is very good, like we've had so many incidences that many students don't even know because of the team just takes care of them smoothly and diligently. And I would just like to appreciate that, even though they're not here, but. Also, I'd like to talk about an issue that many people, including myself, have faced, and I've heard about just from members of the school, is that I don't feel like it's enough awareness, is the burnout that many high schoolers feel. And this can come from overworked and overload of homework or stress from outside of school life, but I feel like it should be talked about more because I feel like many students just rant to the other friends, but they don't go to the counselors or teachers that could help them face with that, especially as a senior coming up with college applications and all that stress, along with the homework I have and clubs and a job. It can be overwhelming sometimes, and sometimes you feel like you can't reach out to people that you can to help with you. And it also affects the attendance. People just get so overwhelmed, they just need breaks, and they miss more and more school, and once you just miss one, it just is like a domino effect. So I just feel like maybe some programs or something, awareness can just be brought to that issue.
Very good, all right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you both taking time out of, speaking of burnout, you know, that you all are taking time out to be with, here with us this evening, and we find great value in hearing, you know, through student voices what the challenges are. So thank you so much, both, for taking time to be here with us tonight. Reverend Cummings, are you still with us?
I am, no comments.
No comments, okay. Well, thank you for calling in and being with us this evening. Dr. James?
Thank you. I do have a few things I wanted to touch on tonight. So I'll start with some of the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. There was multiple individuals who shared that they reside in District Five and they're neighbors of mine on the north end, and so I just kind of wanted to touch on some of the things that were shared. I, myself, am a parent who utilizes school choice and does not go to my zone school on the north end, but goes to a school in town that's a school choice program for both of my daughters that are school age. And I love the program that we're able to participate in. And I think that there is continued work to do across the district to improve the services we're providing, but I, I think it's important to acknowledge that this is far beyond what Marion County Public Schools can do for a child who may or may not show up when they're five. We have a community effort that needs to take place to ensure that students are prepared for kindergarten. Speaking about seven, I believe the number was seven students who were not potty-trained in a classroom of thirty, I'm familiar with exactly the teacher she's speaking about. Thankfully, now she has, I believe, twenty students in her class, which is class size now, but she did have thirty. I think she was up to thirty-two for a couple of days. And I'm familiar with that particular situation, and to her credit, she's very right. The only reason that teacher was able to sustain any level of normalcy is because she's a veteran teacher. But children showing up to kindergarten, we can't, we can't deny them a free, appropriate education. We have to take those children in arms wide open and help them be best prepared for kindergarten while they are in kindergarten. We have to build the plane while we're flying it, because that child is showing up to us not prepared to learn. And that is going to take a community effort. The community has to start taking accountability for making sure that our children are prepared for kindergarten. Personally, this is something that I am incredibly passionate about, and I serve our community making sure that I'm trying to prepare every child I come in contact with from birth through age five to be prepared for kindergarten. But we have to connect with our families, we have to continue our outreach, we have to partner with the Early Learning Coalition, and all of the other programs that are within our community, Watch Me Grow, to make sure that children are ready to walk in the doors September first if they are five years old. And so we have found ourselves in quite a conundrum, specifically post-COVID. Things look different now in a kindergarten classroom than they did five years ago. I taught kindergarten in twenty-twenty-one, sorry, twenty-eleven, and it looks completely different from twenty-eleven to what it looks like now. And so it is very important that as a community, we continue to dig into and find the roots of this systematical issue that we are experiencing so that we can then have kindergarteners who are ready to learn, ready to grow, and socially and emotionally are prepared to learn and have the rigor of kindergarten, and we can then continue to strengthen them into readers and learners so that they can be successful students and then sit up here getting an A.A. degree and a high school diploma at the same time their senior year. And so I, I, I give credit to the community comment, and it's very valid. Everything that was shared is very valid, but the, the solution doesn't lie right here. Because if they do not come to us until they're five and they come to us unprepared, we have a lot of groundwork to cover. So my hope is that as a community, we're going to continue to problem-solve how to address this systematically so we can provide a better product coming into kindergarten, and then we can blossom that product through to their senior year. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I wanted to give credit to Mr. Ayers. He gets a lot of, he gets a lot of slack, and he gets a lot of hate at the end of the school year every year when he gives projections, because not everybody loves his numbers. But he does generally do a very good job of projecting where, where we are going to go with enrollment. And so as Dr. Brewer just shared, he was pretty much spot-on. Now, schools may fluctuate from school site to school site, but overall, as a district, we are very close to where he said we would be and his team said we would be. And I just wanted to acknowledge the work that he does as a very small department to project where we will go. I want to also mention and just follow up the community comment regarding the Code of Conduct. The Code of Conduct is a document that is for VPK all the way through age twelve or grade twelve. And furthermore, VPK is a choice program. So I feel confident that our school teams are going to work to make sure that we're addressing any parent concerns about behavior in VPK, but it is a choice program. VPK is a very sought-after program specifically in the public school system because it's a full-day free program. And if children are unable to meet our expectations, their enrollment is, you know, conditionary based on their participation and the behavior that they bring to the classroom. So I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. And lastly, I just wanted to touch base about the incident from yesterday. Personally, I did a little bit of reach out to Chief Balkin with the Ocala Police Department and had a conversation, because I wanted to understand where does the accountability lie? We have a lot of conversation online, social media, about who should be accountable for a nine-year-old making a really poor choice. And so I think it's important to note, and this was something that I learned today, and I wanted to share with the Board, in the spirit of legislative priorities, most certainly this wouldn't be one we take on, but again, as a community, I think it could be something we discuss. Florida Statute seven-nine-zero dot one-seven-four, it talks about the safe storage of firearms. And specifically, when you look in here, and this is speaking to where a minor is likely to gain access, essentially, it says, shall keep the firearm in a securely locked box or container or in a location which a reasonable person would believe to be secure, or shall secure with a trigger lock, except if the person's carrying it or it's close within proximity. And so when you get into the weeds in this, it becomes very clear that what we would consider a safe and secure place for a firearm where a minor would be is not actually outlined in state statute. And so what we would all collectively, I'm sure, agree to, which is like a safe that's locked by a code or by a fingerprint behind a lock and key, this statute does not implement that same structure. And I think that, and Chief Balkin agreed, that there's work to do in this particular statute. So as a community, I'm hopeful that we can continue to have conversation about how to strengthen statutes like this, so that we can make sure that we're doing everything possible as a community, again, to ensure that students do not have access to weapons. Because ultimately, no adult was charged in yesterday's event, and there are, you know, things that will come out about that, but students still found access to a weapon. And so I think it's important to make sure that we, as a community, are strengthening how we secure our weapons and make sure that our students do not have access to them. But I am so, I'm so proud of the students who saw something and said something. And ultimately, that is what it comes down to, is if you see someone making a poor choice, you use your voice to advocate on your behalf. And that bus driver followed all of our protocols, and Mr. McFadden's work in the last couple of years to get those emergency radios, and so that we have really strengthened our security so that we can have timely responses to emergencies. And I'm just proud of the work that we did, and saddened by the choice of that student. And I'm hopeful that as a community, we're going to continue to make improvements for students having access to things like that so that we can have a safer community. So with that, I will close the night out for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. James. Ms. Thoreau?
Thank you, Chair Conrad. I'm going to start with the student board members. Welcome again, and thank you so much for being up here. You are part of an advocacy group, and other student board members that have come before you have spoken very passionately about the need for increased, not only increased availability of mental health services, but increased use of them. And that really ties in with attendance and tardies, because if you're struggling and then you're late to school, or God forbid, don't come at all, then you're missing the opportunity to connect with a guidance counselor, to connect with a teacher who cares, to connect with a social worker, to connect with a school psychologist, to connect with a, there's a lot of connections that can be made if you're in school often enough to, to utilize them. So that is one of the many reasons why this Board is so passionate about attendance globally. It is our number-one legislative priority. We're working to advocate to change state statute, which hasn't even really been reviewed probably since nineteen-eighty, which is like ancient history to you guys, which seems strange, I will say. But fact of the matter is, times were different then than what they are now, and it is high time that we confront reality from the top of the state all the way down to the classroom for what the needs are. And so please know that you continue to be heard. We are working, or maybe it's already happened, there's so many good things happening, sometimes it's hard to keep track, looking at a career pathway for students like yourselves that are interested in going into the mental health field and having that be a dual enrollment opportunity. So please know that you are heard, seen, and so appreciated. I loved what you said about tardies, because there is no state statute at all about that. So it really is up to us as a district to come up with some strategies to really encourage kids to not be tardy. And of course, the one thing we'll hear a lot from parents was, well, the bus is late every day. Well, we have a special code for that, and it's code B. So a student is not going to be held accountable, you know, for being tardy because the bus is late. But in the end, we want every student to experience while they're in school what it may be like as they move forward into, further into young adulthood. And being late to school is not going to cut it when you start working. And I think that one of you is already working, is that you? Yes. So you understand what I'm saying, right? You know, you're expected to, to be at work and to be able to get along with people and to be willing to learn and do your job to the best of your ability. So we're doing all we can as a district to provide those opportunities to mirror, you know, what it's going to be like in the quote-unquote "real world," which certainly has its challenges as, as Board Member James alluded to. And so we are doing all we can to try to position our youth so that when you get out there, you will be, have the same energy and vibrancy and sense of urgency to continue to improve things. Because I don't think at this point right now, too many people are really satisfied with the way a lot of things are going, you know? I'll just say that as a global statement. But to me, that's just an opportunity for great change. So I'm really looking forward to that happening. So thank you again for being with us. I wanted to shout out to O'Crass just because of the great work that they are doing that's already been acknowledged. They're very much about the big three. The students will, are very much able to say exactly what the big three are, do what's right, do your best, treat others the way you want to be treated. I had the opportunity to hand out some ICs, which of course kids love, and it was, it was hot last week, or I don't know, the days go by fast, I think it was last Friday. And the kids were just, they were able to say that right off the bat, and they knew they hadn't gotten any referrals, and they knew all about do what's right, do your best, treat others the way you want to be treated. I could really see them as they were waiting on the blue line, you know, they were, they were calm, they were courteous, they were respectful, they were doing all of the things that, that young people need to learn how to do to be able to get along in life. So visiting our schools is, is the highlight of, of the jobs, you know, that we have. It makes sitting up here and, and taking arrows and sometimes having really hard conversations worth it, because it's all about you guys. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. Board, I have just a couple of things to share with you, and I'll try to keep them brief. First, I wanted to start, start off by thanking Mrs. Green for joining us this evening. Attorney Powers is not here, he had an emergency come up, and so we're just really grateful on such short notice you were able to fill in. So thank you so much for being here with us tonight. And with that, I wanted to share with you that there was an upward meeting scheduled yesterday. It is being rescheduled, and I wanted to share with you that all parties were relieved. There was quite a bit of work, I guess, to do this round of discussion, and so everyone was happy to have another week to work on the contract, which is where, what I believe they're working on currently. In our consent agenda, agenda tonight, we do have high school CCC, South Marion High, so that was exciting. Look forward to that as that school is coming together. Dr. Brewer, you did a quick video the other day that you shared, so it was exciting, the walls are up and, and things are really, really happening. I also wanted to say, you know, Dr. Brewer shared earlier about the eighty-six percent of students that have not received a referral, and thinking about our donation that we received from the Sheriff's Department this evening, and I, you know, Dr. James mentioned her conversation with Chief Balkin, and I just really am grateful for our community, the community partnerships that we have, the open communication and the work to keep our students in our community safe. So I just wanted to highlight that and let our community know how grateful I am for all the things that they do, from donations to communications and all of those partnerships. I also want to say, Monday is Ms. Thoreau's birthday, so happy birthday. It's coming up real soon. I won't see you before then, I don't think, so I wanted to tell you happy birthday. Also, this coming week is Give for Marion, which is not a Marion County Public Schools activity, but when I look at all of the nonprofits that participate in But when I look at all of the nonprofits that participate in Give for Marion, so many of them support our students and our staff. And so I just wanted to give a shout-out. If you're looking at doing some donations, that'll be live next week. I believe it's Tuesday and Wednesday, the sixteenth and seventeenth. And Board, with that, that's all I have to share with you this evening. If there is no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna call it three-zero. This meeting is adjourned at 7:22. Thank you, Board, and thank you, staff.